It's my, and it's my pleasure, special pleasure to announce the first speaker. It's Dr. Paulina Sinovets. She is a founder and head of Odessa Center for Nonproliferation. Currently, she is a fellow at NATO Defense College in Rome. She also, she's a associate professor at the Department of International Relations at Odessa Metchenikov National University. In 2006, she was a research fellow at the James Martin Center for Nonproliferation Studies. In 2015, she was also a fellow at NATO Defense College in Rome. And in 2017-18, a Fulbright Scholar at the CNS Office in Washington DC. She is an expert in nuclear weapons policy and published articles in The Bulletin of Atomic Scientists, Russia and Global Politics, NATO Defense College Research Papers, and etc. She will speak about Russia's nuclear narratives, the case of Ukraine. So please, Paulina, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Valeria. It's my great pleasure to be here. And you know, first of all, I would like to express my gratitude to all organizers for inviting us here. I mean, us, ODCNP, and me, in particular, for giving this talk. As you know, I'm, it's a little bit, you know, it's my field, but it's still a little bit out of my field. But I'm, because I'm closer to strategic studies. However, I try to do my best to highlight this issue a little bit better. Also, I would like to express my special gratitude to Irina Maximenko, because she is the author of this brilliant presentation. I just add some kind of note of mine. But still, the beauty of the presentation is all Irina's. So, yeah, this, actually, this presentation is based on my article together with Kristina Kalinska and John Barancini about Russia's nuclear disinformation. And I would like to present it a little bit like in a more short and concrete way, not to be too boring to you. Can we have, yes, somehow? Okay, again, I think it was a good idea to say that first we'll start from the notion of narrative, something which is a message to convince, you know, public, outer, out of the country and in the international arena and in the country in some kind of truth, whether it's a real truth or false truth, but in this case, it's a completely false truth, we know. Actually, it's not a truth. It's disinformation, one of the main tools of Russia in the war with Ukraine. This is why I would like just to show how this narrative is used in the war with Ukraine as the tool of informational propaganda. Okay, narrative is not that interesting anymore. So, the first narrative was when Russia started the war in Ukraine last February. We have discovered that Ukraine wants to be a nuclear state. And this idea came from President Putin, who said that Ukraine is very much interested to become a nuclear weapons state again. And what were the proofs? The fact that the first president of Ukraine, who gave up nuclear weapons, was in his latest interviews expressing regrets that he gave up nuclear weapons and actually Ukraine is now vulnerable in the face of Russian aggression. Again, many political statements about the disappointment and the validity of the Budapest Memorandum followed, starting from President Poroshenko and then ending up with President Zelensky, who made a speech in February of the last year at the Munich Security Conference, again, expressing his disappointment about the Budapest Memorandum and its invalidity. However, and again, we know that there were a lot of debates in our Parliament, Verhofnerada, regarding the necessity to give up non-nuclear status of Ukraine, to leave the NPT. However, in spite of this multiple declarations from different officials, non-officials, and other people, there has never been any serious debate on the gaining of nuclear status of Ukraine again. And one of the biggest proof is the fact that no matter that we have a bill in the Verhofnerada, staying there from 2014, I mean, the project of the bill, to abandon the NPT, according to the law of Ukraine on joining of the NPT, where we have the right to do it if the highest interest of the state is jeopardized. No matter that we have it, nobody has ever voted, nobody has ever discussed this. So it's just somewhere in the deepest, darkest storages of Verhofnerada, and I believe it will never come out. Again, the fact that Ukraine can build up nuclear weapons, the first idea, and of course, it's coming up from the Russian MOD, from Russian intelligence services. The idea that Ukraine can build up nuclear weapons because it has delivery systems, which is really weird, because all delivery systems, all the missiles which are participated in shutting of Ukraine are dual capable. That means that, you know, Russia has much more than we do, and we still were not bombed with any nukes. So, and the fact that Toshka U can carry nuclear payload, it doesn't, you know, matter at all, since you don't have a nuclear bomb. And no matter that we have a lot of uranium, we don't have the full uranium enrichment cycle, of course. And we even do not, yes, we do not enrich uranium, and so we have never done this and probably will not. Again, we could theoretically think about building up a nuclear bomb before 2010, when we had, still had 234 kilos of the enriched uranium in the Kyiv Institute of Nuclear Energy. However, President Yunukovich gave it up at the Nuclear Security Summit in 2010, which is also not looking like the preparation for a nuclear weapons program. And again, speaking about dirty bomb, because when Russia understood that, you know, these, all these narratives about nuclear bomb of Ukraine looks very weird and really ridiculous, they decided that the other frame could be a dirty bomb, which is just putting nuclear elements in some conventional explosive and then to make the radioactive contamination of the, you know, some kind of parts. However, this is also quite ridiculous, because technically, experts say that if you would like to use gamma radiation materials, then you need to cover it with the amount of lead, one kilo to one gram. So it means that the most, you know, like, basic dirty bomb would weigh about five tons, which is really problematic to put it somewhere, and it's not the smartest idea ever imagined. So of course, this is all, and again, Ukraine is very much verified with the all IIA inspections and the additional protocol, which is also the matter of the next slide, because the most, the funniest narrative was the fact that the West is trying to help Ukraine to build up a nuclear weapon, which is really strange considering the fact that the United States use billions of dollars to sustain and to encourage Ukraine to give up nuclear weapons and to provide the nuclear disarmament. And also, of course, the fact that Ukraine has not, is not only the member of the IIA, but also has signed the additional protocol, which means that any kind of activities related to nuclear weapons could be detected at the territory of Ukraine. So it's also very funny and false. And again, if we read publications, not only of Ukrainian authors, but also by the liberally looking Russian authors, which are still exist in Russia, we'll see that there is no any doubt that Ukraine is not going, is not ready, and is not planning and capable to build up anything related to nuclear weapons or dirty bomb program. So I think that this is all I wanted to say, just a little bit of conclusions. Yes, so, really, I mean, yeah, you can look at these conclusions, but I can say that what is very surprising, I mean, for me, as a researcher of nuclear deterrence, is the fact that even now, during the war, like a full-scale war with Russia, the level of public support for nuclear weapons is not exceeding 53%, which is, which is, you know, which could be high if we speak about the peace times, but during the war, this is extremely low on my consideration. If we compare it to the support of Ukraine joining NATO, it's 78, from 78 to 83%. So it's very obvious that Ukrainians are not thinking of relying on nuclear weapons, are not thinking of nuclear weapons as a stable tool of providing its security, thinking more about integration, going to the West, becoming a part of your Atlantic community. And I think that this is the highest insurance of the fact that Ukraine is not interested in building a bomb, because it will never be accepted with a bomb to the family of European nations. That is why, well, I think that Russian propaganda showed quite unsuccessful results in the process of this war, and I'm happy about that. So I hope that everything else will fail in the way the propaganda is failing. And thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Paulina, for wonderful presentation. Please think about your questions, comments. You will have opportunity to ask them. So, and now the second speaker, it's Georgi Gogace. He is an experienced professional with a focus on strategic communication, disinformation work, security, conflicts, and preventing illicit weapons proliferation. As a board at the Georgian Center for Strategy and Development, Georgi leads several programs, including addressing infidemia challenges in the region of Georgia and empowering Georgia in preventing the proliferation of advanced conventional weapons. And he'll present the topic pandemic disinformation, Russian involvement in CBRN-related disinformation in Georgia, and tendencies. And thank you, Georgi, one more time for joining us, because we were supposed to have another speaker, but unfortunately, he couldn't join. And Georgi agreed just like one and a half days ago, he was ready to contribute. So thank you for this. Please, the floor is yours.
Thanks. It's working, right? Yeah, I'll be his ambassador to this conference, your net form member. And yeah, thanks again for having me today. And it's a big, big pleasure to see the subject matter experts and professionals in the field. I know how it feels to be the part of the network, because I'm also the part of other program, US Department Program on Global Security Cooperation. And even though it was years ago that we were together in the States, we still continue the close cooperation and coming up with the new ideas, and new projects, new birthday cards, and etc. So it's always good to be the part of the network. So, welcome who visit Georgia first time, and weather is very, very friendly. And finally, it's a very beautiful Mayweather in Georgia, and hope you see the regions too. So, I'll be very brief, and I would like to kind of leave the space for the audience to discuss these patterns. So beyond the lot of security challenges and existential challenges that Georgia faces today, I think we are blessed to be also the arena of Russian disinformation campaigns. And I sometimes joke that Russia tests first its propaganda messages in Georgia and then deploys it in the other parts of the countries. But before going to the specific narratives and the messages that we see and we kind of track, I think it's worthy to mention how Georgia's information environment is today, what it looks like, and what kind of vulnerabilities it has. Through many researches, we kind of got in the conclusion that Georgia's information environment is not kind of unique per se, and it's not kind of only happens in Georgia. And we see this kind of tendencies in other regions. But what I wanted to highlight is that first, Georgia's current information environment is very much based on eco-chambers, which means that the society, and a big part of the society lives under their filter, what type of information they get and what type of information they consume. So this is mainly to different reasons, including social media technologies, the big data kind of consumption, and also the political polarization that we have. Sometimes when I go to my hometown and listen to my grandfather and grandmother, I receive absolute two different stories on the same issue. And it's a kind of validation that even in one family, there are these eco-chambers. And when, when, when us and international organizations sometimes come up with the countermeasures to these strategies, we sometimes miss this kind of notion that the people we talk sometimes are not in the same information bubble that we, that we are. So that's very important to kind of see this very visible tendency in Georgia too. The second one is that the country is under occupation and under the foreign military presence. And we can discuss the disinformation challenges, for instance, in NATO countries and in the, in the US, in the EU countries. But when 50 kilometers away, you have the foreign military presence from your capital, that certainly creates the very much fatal ground and vulnerabilities to your information space. And even if, if sometimes they kind of put up the new barbed wire or kind of new, new sign, it hijacks the information space in Georgia and creates a lot of, lot of, lot of tension. So for Russians to kind of, kind of plant a seed of delusion and confusion in Georgian society is very, very easy. The third one is also the current consumer information is keen to be the more sensationalist, in a sense. And it kind of matches. It's like in the marketplace. Russia provides the supply to the demand to the information, like biological mosquitoes that transform the weapons of mass destruction to the North Skalkasian countries from Georgia, and etc. It looks funny, right? But you can't imagine how the kind of riding horse it becomes in the villages, in the regions, when you have these eco-chambers and sometimes you watch the propaganda channels or Russian TV kind of TV outlets. Going to the CBRN-related stuff, I think, and why, why Russia deploys the propaganda, right? I mean, what, what is objective? Why, why it wants that? Why to kind of spend the money and the, and the resources? Because the simple goal, as it is, is to kind of undermine Georgia's social and security integrity and societal resilience and integrity, and also kind of put the confusion whether it's worthy to kind of go in the path that we chose as a, as a nation, meaning the getting closer to the Western infrastructure and alliances. And it always test, whether it's kind of CBRN, whether it's a kind of religion, whether it's everyday livelihood. So it always kind of tries to undermine, diminish this decision of the Georgian, Georgian people. And it's very primitive too. So the so-called beauty of Russian propaganda is, it's very simple. It's very primitive. It's, it's understood by the people in the kindergarten and in the universities. And while we become with strategies to counter afford these attacks, it changes. It goes to the another primitive narrative and the primitive, primitive messages. So that's where we kind of lagging behind, I think, that where we struggle a bit, how to respond to this propaganda. Because we agreed as a, as a, as a Western ally countries that you cannot come up with a propaganda with your propaganda, because you create another, another delusion in the, in a society. Just to name some of the, what, what came in the last years, especially when the war, when they started war in, war in Ukraine, I think it glow, it goes closer to each other. So before it was Georgia, now it's Ukraine and, Ukraine and Georgia. And I, I saw the Lugar colleagues here and SDC colleagues, the credits go to them, the old CBRN-related propaganda, it's like a secret laboratories in Georgia and Ukraine, in Moldova, the first kind of disinformation that they pour in the, it's streaming in everywhere. We don't know what is happening there, what they produce, what they test. This all kind of flus and stuff like that comes from these secret laboratories. So second one is a secret laboratory is controlled by Americans. So we're like a guinea pigs for, for Americans and to attack holy Russia. And third one is like these pathogens and the biological weapons that now secretly is used in Ukraine is transported from, from Georgia. So the, it won't be the problem, right? If someone on the first channel or RT talks about this, right? You will see that it's another set of silly propaganda that comes, comes from Moscow. But when you, when you hear that Lavrov, Petrushchev, and other high-ranked officials of Moscow, and Kremlin, and Shoigu, and others say this, it puts another kind of simple seed in the minds of people that it can't be totally fake. If Minister of Foreign Affairs of Russia says the guy was sitting in the Security Council, opening the Security Council meeting, and etc. So it creates this delusion, because it comes from the very much first class of Russian, Russian messaging machine. So I'll stop here and would be happy to respond to your questions and join the debate. Thank you. Thanks, Valeria.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Georgi. You had a wonderful presentation, and I want to add maybe two words. This is, yeah, I guess the biggest problem here that this information is something very emotional, and we can't control emotions. That's why sometimes it works so good. So please prepare your questions, because the speakers are really great today at this panel. So, and our last speaker, but not least, it's Dr. Tatiana Novoselova. She is research fellow, Law Program at the Center for the Study of Democracy at Bulgaria. Dr. Tatiana Novoselova is a postdoctoral professional combining research, training, and project management experience. Her main research interests covers the crosscut between international law and security with a focus on policy sustainability. Much of Tatiana's research has examined the global governance of chemical and biological security, and the processes underpinning the integrity of the international norms against chemical and biological weapons. She will present the topic, How Programming Disinformation Can Challenge the International Chemical Prohibition Regime, with reference to a specific case study from Bulgaria.
Thank you so much. And once again, I would like to thank the organizers for having me and for the opportunity to participate and present to you today. It's a great pleasure. So in the next 10 minutes or so, what I'm going to do is I'm going to tell you a little bit more about our approach to the study of disinformation that we have at our organization. And I'll link that to a specific case study that we've been looking into together with our colleagues back home. And that case study is, is actually concerns of the alleged so-called use of a chemical agent. And I'll tell you a little bit more about a context. And in order to illustrate how this information could manifest, but also how it could have much broader implications than just to confuse or destabilize or just play on the emotions. Not saying that that's not enough, but it can have even broader implications. So bear with me in that. So to start with, when you're talking about this information, I think that it's important to remember that we are talking about the deliberate spread of false information. So essentially, the deliberate spread of lies. And in the Russian case, what we have been observing for the, over the past years, and of course, that's not something that has started now. It has its roots back in the, during the Cold War and how the Soviet Union practiced a lot of its foreign policy. But really, this information is deeply rooted in the, in Russia, modern Russia's approach to, to foreign policy. So we can say that this information is really part of the way Russia tries to influence agendas in other countries, to exert its influence, to exercise, to control, to press, manipulate. And that will be both domestic diaspora, domestic, domestic affairs, so that will be the general public, but also political figures and government entities. Now, when we're talking about the use of this information as a tool for foreign policy, one thing that we've discovered through our analysis at our organization is that what Russia uses, so the way Russia practices its influence, it's through networks of economic and also strategic interests, using those established, established networks essentially to penetrate foreign countries and capture whole sectors of the economy and divert those to their own interests. So essentially, strategic corruption and illicit financial flaws. And those tools are, are used to penetrate, capture, and divert to, essentially, to serve Russian, Russian foreign interests. How this plays out in the media sector is that when you look at the media, media sphere in Southeast Europe, Bulgaria included, you would notice that there are a lot, there is a significant proportion of the media space that is taken up by media outlets and sources. A lot of those are in the online domain that are in a way connected to those power networks that go back with ties to the Kremlin and to the Russian state. So essentially, those, what has been mentioned in terms of eco-chambers, so those eco-chambers are also in a way created through the use of those outlets that are essentially activated to disseminate fake news and misleading information in support of already established disinformation narratives that the Kremlin is trying to propagate and use accordingly in different parts of, different parts of the region. What is also interesting is that besides media outlets, one, one tool that has proven to be somewhat effective when it comes to the Russian, Russian use of media space, it's the Russian Embassy pages. And we've done some recent analysis showing how, how much interactions there are actually in countries in the Southeast Europe, Bulgaria included again, with posts and publications that come on the Russian, Russian Embassy space, Russian Embassy pages. And in very, very often, those pages are actually used to repost and propagate and amplify claims that would normally people would see on television channels. But now, because a lot of those TV channels are under sanctions, so essentially, the online domain is being used to circumvent the sanctioned regimes and still try to reach out and get hold of those different publics and try to disseminate those claims. Now, how this plays out when it comes to CBRN and particular chemical security in Bulgaria, it's an interesting, interesting question. Because back in 2015, in Bulgaria, there is a poison incident. I call it incident, but in a way, it was, and it's already been concluded by our prosecutor's office that it was a murder attempt. However, we'll reach that point, because between the time when the case happened, when that incident happened back in 2015, and the time when it was, people were indicted on charges for attempted murder, the time span was about six years. So what essentially happened was that a prominent figure in the Bulgarian arms trade and arms production business was poisoned back in 2015. And at the moment, when, so he was poisoned together with his son and executive firm director. When they were admitted to hospital at that point, it was recognized that something was weird about this situation, that it wasn't just people being treated for some sort of cardio disease or heart arrest, you name it, and they were admitted to toxicology. And that was, it was, the lucky part was that it was, what was happening was brought it early on upon admission to hospital, and appropriate treatment was delivered to, to the victim so that they could recover. Now, from there, the story got really, really tangled. There was an investigation. That investigation took place very slowly, studious, of course, because with all kinds of those, those kinds of attacks or incidents or situations, unless... unless you take very timely and very quick measures, things are very likely to get buckled down essentially and to run into a lot of challenges and a lot of hurdles. Because as we have seen with other similar cases, including the Skripal poisoning and the Novant poisoning, those kinds of attacks are usually conducted in a way that is difficult to detect and very difficult to attribute. So in that sense, even though the victims were cured and appropriate medical care was delivered very quickly, still the problem with the investigation remained. And that investigation took quite a few years. In the meantime, the victim, Emiliana Gebrev, he essentially contacted internationally accredited laboratory in Finland. And that laboratory is accredited with the Organization for Prohibition of Chemical Weapons, where samples that were taken from him were essentially brought for testing. And the independent sample analysis concluded that he has come into contact with some sort of organophosphorus agent. Now, the Novitok family nerve agents, those are organophosphorus agents. However, because the analysis of the finished laboratory didn't demonstrate that conclusively, didn't say conclusively that Novitok was used. And that was simply because no samples of the agent from the spot were taken. This was an analysis based on samples taken from the victim. So it was difficult to concurrent to demonstrate what exactly, what type of an organophosphorus agent was used. That provided fertile ground for Russian media, but also for some of the key ranking figures in the Bulgarian domain to say that if Novitok was not used, that means that there wasn't an attack. So no chemical warfare agent, no attack. That was just a poisoning. That was just an accident. End of story. Now, it's important to take a step back and look at approach this case and its holicity and its context. Because it's not, had this been a one-off situation, one may at least be tempted to entertain the possibility that, okay, probably it was an accident. However, when you look at the broader context of that attack and how Gebrev's companies and warehouses have been targeted on a number of occasions in the past, there were explosions in some of the warehouses where ammunition and weaponry were stored. Those explosions were never properly investigated, even though there were traces and signs indicating that explosive devices were found and located around the explosion sites. On top of that, when you, so that was, that was on the, on the one side. So business sabotage was there and was present. Then also you have to take into consideration that Gebrev's business was weaponry production and Bulgaria is the second, well, by crude estimate ranks as the second largest exporter and producer of Soviet-type ammunition and weaponry after Russia. So in that sense, there are very vested interests of trying to divert that business, those business operations at the interest of that would suit Russia's military and Russia's Russia's defense in a way, well, of course, defense. So when going back to the narratives then and looking at what, how Russian media essentially approached that, approached that case. So the moment that report was published, became available, actually. It never got published, but at least it became available. There were very strong, so Russian media was very adamant to claim that because Novitok was not present, this is an accident. On top of that, in the meantime, information became available that people who were connected with, were implicated in the Skripal poisoning were also present in Bulgaria around the time when that incident took place. And those movements were recorded, data was, data became available and it was published. So we had this piling of evidence, or at least circumstantial evidence there that just live for a number of years and were not necessarily taken seriously, even by our, by some of the higher ranking judiciary and prosecutor representatives in Bulgaria. It was not until 2021 that the prosecutor's office effectively indicted on charges of attempted murder three operatives of the Russian intelligence force. One of those is also implicated in the Skripals poisoning. So to conclude, when we look at this case, on the one hand, we have an attack where sort of a very suspicious incident taking place on the swell of a particular country. And at the same time, we have this collusion with this information where it is where those narratives essentially saying, no warfare agents used is an accident. Why does it, why does, why is that important? Why does it relates to the chemical prohibition regime? If you go back and read the text of the Chemical Weapons Convention, you would essentially see that the way chemical weapons are prohibited on international, at an international level, it's not by the type of an agent, by the purpose for which they're used. So in this case, whether Novitok was conclusively used or not is not, is not really a question. The question is that some sort of an organophosphorus agent was used for a poisoning. And that's full stop. That, that already shows that it was used by people who are considered also agent of the state. So we here have a context and it's, so there is a context. And on top of that, there is, there is really an attempt, not only to manipulate the public, but also to essentially say that chemical weapons doesn't apply here. It's not, it's not, it's not applicable. End of story. I'll stop here and very much look forward to your questions.
Thank you, thank you, Tatiana. Yes, thank you for your brilliant presentation. I'm sure you have a lot of questions. Oh, great. So I think we will take several questions. You can ask questions directly to each speaker or just to like to everyone. So it can be not a question, but a comment or your view of something. So like in Madrid, I would like to start and then I will pass word to Natalia after, okay? So my first question, it's, I guess it's mostly to Georgi, but anyone who wants to answer, I will be happy. As I understand, this disinformation campaign, it mostly influenced like on the population because it's mostly like psychological one. It's not so maybe resultative with governments, but it really creates waves among people. And a lot of people just don't know really what is disinformation is and that there can be some disinformation because a lot of people believe that if they see it in the news, if they see it in the paper, some newspaper, then it's true. And even if afterwards, there is like, it wasn't true, people don't believe. Because they believe in the first, what they see usually. So it's like psychological, emotional, as I said, thing. So are there any tools, thoughts, how we can struggle with it? Is it possible at all? Or it's not maybe so important if not all amount of population believes in it? Maybe then we don't need to do anything. So what are your thoughts about it? It's one question and the second one from Natalia Claus and then we can answer and have another round of questions. Thank you.
Okay, so as you mentioned in our, in my presentation, we hold our panel on the INOTEGO conference, what was dedicated also to disinformation. And I'm very happy that we have discussion here because it gives different angle. We start actually our panel from survey. We do many matter like and people who was present at the conference, they share their opinion. And one of the question was, there was many, if you want to, interesting people later on publish our report. So we will have a link to our YouTube channel to check all answers. Unfortunately, not everybody often using many matters. So we have less numbering that we want because there was like more than 100 people and having about 16 the highest answers, but still it's very interesting representation. So one of the question, like in general to everybody or panelists was, in your country, how do you assess the level of nuclear disinformation in the Ukrainian media? So in case of Ukraine, Ukrainian participants say there was three options, high, low, I don't know. It's obvious. So we have equal answers about high and low. And some answer about don't know. So what about your country? What is the level of this information in your local media?
Yeah, it's a Nobel Prize answer if I know how to defeat Russia and disinformation in two minutes. So yeah, actually, you are totally right. And this propaganda and not only the propaganda, but the strategic communications is also, is to reach the hearts of the people rather than the minds of people, right? Because we have two language, how we talk to the audience professionals like you and how we talk during the feast in the village. And who reached the first heart gets the, gets a kind of first impression on the topic. And yes, absolutely, it's the information without emotion is just a pure fact. So and what we really want now is to make people believe that their path is right. And going to the Western infrastructure, Western alliances and etcetera is not kind of desire of one of political parties, but rather than the decision of the nation. So the truth is a big ally for you when it comes to the addressing the disinformation and propaganda. The, I think the second largest, largest pillar is that while we craft these countermeasures, it is important to know that we are not talking about the people who we think that they are illiterate, they don't kind of participate in a civic life and they are delusional, they are mistaken and etcetera, etcetera. Sometimes you will be very surprised how smart people, in a sense of having the degrees and being in university and being in the teaching at the schools, teaching with the students, talking to the media, they are also very much delusional. So what we really want is to understand how this supply chain of information works. Who is the end user? How you should talk with the end user? What language you should use with the end user? What language you should not use with the end user, right? And by that time, you kind of build this bridge with the society, what you are saying, that they kind of start believing and start understanding. For Russians, it's very easy. They are kind of throwing mud to you. They are saying that it's a gold and it's your job to prove that it's not gold and it's a mud. And it's you are always in the defensive position, right? So you are saying, no, this isn't, this is not right. This is a correct answer. Before you craft your correct answer, the first impression is there. First kind of seed of confusion, seed of delusion is there. So what I sometimes say is that addressing this type of threats is never the short-term period goal. You can debunk, you can do the fact checking. That's absolutely the necessary that you do. And you do it in a faster way, in a smarter way, in a modern way. But you also need to concentrate on the medium and the long-term objectives. And I very much like the Finnish model on that side, that you start from the kindergarten, kind of being the critical thinker, kind of doubt the information, validate the information, how to validate the information. So I got a daughter, she's four years old. And I, we had this kind of game that I frequently lie to her and doing the, but it's not a bad, bad lie. I just try to kind of start the critical thing that she kind of sees every information from the critical perspective. And in the schools, in the universities, we have a lot of things to do. And I think it's cheap too, but sometimes we need to be patient because Georgia is not like Finland, because we are building this education system right now. We are building these state institutions right now. I know that we are in hurry, but it's never the good way to reach your goal. On a short term, I think we all know what we can do and what we must do. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
And on the, sorry, I will just complete on the nuclear disinformation. I don't know, because in Georgian case, we only see the components of the nuclear stuff rather than someone wants to sell some nuclear materials and etcetera. Because we are not a nuclear country, don't have a nuclear power plant. We only have the leftovers of nuclear materials from the Soviet times. So it is not in the air in a very much intensive, intensive way. But in two weeks ago, someone was arrested to trying to sell this uranium in the western part of the country and it pops up. So how it got here, where it came from, who is in the middle, who is a kind of the supervisor of these processes and etcetera. So then it unleashes, but I think not in everyday life. If I'm mistaken, please, colleagues will interrupt. Thanks.
Thank you, Tatiana.
Thanks so much. Just very quickly, two quick points. One, I definitely don't want to undermine the significance of development of media literacy and critical thinking. We also need to think about the supply side of this information. And that's essentially improving the media climate in countries that are vulnerable to the type of disinformation and the way Russia's tactics to disseminate and work through dissemination and amplification of disinformation narratives. So some of my colleagues, they have come across this model of media capture, which essentially looks at four different types of media capture. One is through direct ownership, so that will be Russian company or company related to Russia owning a media outlet. And by media outlet, that can be a television broadcaster, online, online sort of outlet that propagates and disseminates this information. Second type is through advertising. Advertising revenue allows people who are, allows people to control the budgets of different media outlets. And in this way, leverage that to execute direct influence on the editorial policies. What is being published, how is being published? Third type is government capture. And that's where it becomes really tricky because it's, it is possible that senior government figures in the targeted country could, in one way, whether willingly or unwillingly, help disseminate or if not disseminate, amplify or at least not debunk effectively some of those disinformation narratives. So ambiguous when it comes to ambiguous positions, lack of desire to call things as they are. For instance, in Bulgaria, as at the very start of the invasion against Ukraine, we had a situation where our then Minister of Defense, in his first televised interview, refused to call this what is going on a war, but used the phrase special military operation. I mean, two days, not even two days later, he was dismissed from his. I mean, two days, not even two days later, he was dismissed from his position. Uh but it it still demonstrates that even high ranking political figures could fall into the trap of uh not using strategic communication and not necessarily uh living up to the expectation as how you should deal with uh this kind of disinformation threats as as one should. And the fourth type of uh media capture is the cognitive domain. So that's when you already have a population that is predisposed to believe what they may heard, that's playing on the emotions, that people who have um some sort of emotional sentiment to um to the country that has disseminated in those those disinformation narratives. And again, I mean, in Southeast Europe and in Bulgaria, we have witnessed some of those um some of those problems. Now, we haven't done any specific analysis with regard to the nuclear disinformation. However, one thing that I can say for a fact is um some of our uh results from uh from from surveys demonstrated even after the invasion of Ukraine, around a third of the Bulgarian population remain positively predisposed towards Russia. So that's, of course, that figure failed drastically, because it was over sixty percent before the invasion. But nevertheless, uh it's still a third of a third of the population is still uh is still a good, quite a good proportion. And uh going back to some of the data that I was sharing about the embassy post, for instance, Bulgaria is probably one of the countries that ranks the highest uh in Southeast Europe when it comes to interactions with those posts. Now, we haven't established how much of those are real interactions and how much how much of those are trolling automatic interactions. But nevertheless, those figures still say something about the tendencies and the political predisposition uh within the country and the region as a whole. So thanks.
Yeah, just a short continuation of the same topic. You asked about our countries, but as far as we were speaking about Ukraine, then I can speak a little bit about my other country, which is Italy now for a while. Um so I am working um now for a while in NATO Defense College and I'm mentoring a group of officers who are to write their individual projects. So those are high ranking uh military officers from different countries um who are supposed to go to the further positions in NATO. So the first individual project, which I read, is about uh the NATO position and the war and the Ukrainian crisis, which is Ukrainian crisis. And the main idea that um um this is a complicated interaction of the historical, ethno-political, economic and military problems of Russia and Ukraine. This is a very internal thing between two of them. Um nobody should interfere, except especially NATO, who'd never interfered in anything like this. Uh because everything is complicated. Both countries are committing war crimes. Both countries are raping women, which is very interesting sounding. So and both countries are very much guilty in what is happening. So I was deeply impressed that the the person in the NATO country who has a wide access to the information um Western media, the person who is, it is, it was an Italian officer, so whose prime minister has a very pro Ukrainian position, is probably listening to Russia today or I don't know what. But 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 this is a showcase on how Russian propaganda is affecting not only people in Russia or in Ukraine or Russian language world, but some people who are very far away from this, but they're listening to this. They make, they believe this is true and they are the part of the future NATO structure. This is what was strikes me most. So he's in the minority, but but those are still there. Yeah, this is about how this disinformation propaganda is working, uh especially the Russian one. Thank you for answer. And I need to say, what does Georgi say? I a little bit respectfully disagree. I'm using this word expression created by Valeria. Uh Russia has different levels of this information. It's not really literally basic. Yes, of course, seventy percentage of the population of Russian country or uh or other country will hit with this basic very low quality of this information. But they have really good, what they are doing good with this book of propaganda for many years. And they are really hitting different levels of the people. That's how uh Polina shows a good example, like higher level person who has even a a he a strongly believe uh access to the secret information. Yeah, like they have truly if this position, I mean, like a high position person in the government, it's supposed to have a truly the confirmed confirmation. So in this case, like even those persons are hitting with those propaganda. There's been like all levels are very on low levels. They have very different strategy have to affect every each person.
Um just a very brief, uh not not a ping pong from 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 my side. But um yes, I I also also agree with you. And what worked when we when we saw the war started in Ukraine, everyone was looking for EU and NATO countries, what they do, right? Whether they will go and speak from their offices or they do action. So the best way to deal with the propaganda and disinformation is action. And we saw this action, we see this action from the US allied countries on the battlefield on the in the in the in other areas. So that's what I'm saying, you do action. You don't only come up with the kind of your messages, your narrative. So best solution, best cure to the disinformation is to show that you are capable, you desire to do the action. And that's why it can that they vanished, the that the EU and NATO will abandon uh Ukraine. So this was the biggest propaganda first narrative in Georgia. In three days, the war will end and the UN NATO will abandon Ukraine. So we saw the different path and we saw the poll results in Georgia, how supportive the country is to the EU and NATO and the allied infrastructure. Without the action, believe me, it would be below the fifty percentage of the of this. Yep.
Sorry, just small finalizing myself. I'm sorry that I've interrupted everybody that just on the rights of the commercial, we asked up our network establishing also the project Atom Stop Lake about debunking of disinformation. So like like we covering everything, sorry.
Yes, we have two more questions and I guess it will be the last one, because we are a little bit run out of time and we have lunch after, so I don't want you to hate me. So two last questions, please.
Okay, thank you. Uh yeah, I I think the situations have changed a lot in the last fifty years. I remember, you know, you could you could pick out a Soviet photograph just by what it looked like as opposed to a Western one. And if Barry disappeared from a photo, you could figure that out. But the the disruptive technology moving now is artificial intelligence. So I'm wondering if if uh Tatiana and Georgi, are you guys looking at that in your institutes and being able to identify Russians using AI as a as a new way to um introduce propaganda and disinformation? It's much harder to identify.
Thank you. And the second question, and then we will answer.
Thank you very much. Well, uh really, very, very interesting thoughts. Um uh many of my questions have been addressed already, but you know, bringing NATO into the the picture and also the strategic communication, I think it's worth mentioning that NATO was always uh well, we had, there are sets of messages are actually prepared and also publicly that can be accessed, very accessible. And I think it's important to to make use of this. And you know, just um uh maybe a possible question, having in mind the strategic communication, it's how to better coordinate and cooperate actually encountering? Because well, Russia is having this, it's this practice hybrid war for a long time. I mean, Russia today is probably the the most important example uh that was there for long, long time and nothing really happened from us. This is my personal, I'm speaking my personal position here. It's not a uh a position of Romania, the Romanian government. But I think we're somehow late in addressing this issue. And now, of course, we are in a such a such a critical situation. But how to better cooperate and coordinate in sending these messages? And you know, in action, actually, building action. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, uh yes, who wants to answer, react on to questions?
Yeah, don't really work together, you know that. Sorry for this, a little stereotypical. So uh but thanks a lot for the question about disruptive technology. I mean, precisely one of the problems that we are experiencing with Russian uh disinformation strategy, if you wish, is that uh the tools, so the the strategy itself is not new. However, the tools that Russia has at its disposal have has changed. Um so some of my colleagues, they have done uh work on looking at automation and how posts and articles and news pieces um essentially show up and appear in several different locations in thousands for a very short period of time. So that already demonstrates, humanly, that will be impossible to have that, to generate that kind of traffic naturally. So some sort of automation is already at place. Um and it's likely that AI would also be used to amplify that. I mean, uh there already has been evidence that Russia and both Russia and China are actually using AI to craft messages and uh to essentially write pieces. And that really would be the next big thing of how how to prevent, how to stop uh the this in this information coming from AI generated platforms. Because unlike people, AI can generate text very, very quickly, within a snap of a second. And then you can through automation, you can post this through different locations, different websites, different media outlets. So online, it can go uh and be disseminated uh through social media uh in virtually in seconds. Um and the impact of that would be would be huge. We haven't done specific work on AI and Russia. However, what we are currently doing, we are trying to explore the potential of AI for countering disinformation. And some of my colleagues are involved in a project that essentially looks at the development of an AI generator tool that can facilitate and support critical thinking. So essentially, you have um uh people would be able to download plugins on their websites and fact check stuff. And then after they have done this basic fact check, which is available today as well, and you can download these plugins from different sources. Uh some of them are quite reliable. Uh but after you have downloaded this plugin and after you have done this basic fact check, you'd be able to interact with an AI uh tool that that can help you and direct you to more resources, where to get more information. And that would be a way of essentially self uh self check in a way. So do in fact check, more in depth fact check by by yourself essentially. So getting a little bit, becoming a little bit more uh independent on that. We are in the middle stages of the development of that and still doing some testing and collecting data of how to fine tune uh this tool. But I think that it's important to look at AI from from both sides, really. I mean, it's disruptive and it will definitely would create many challenges when it comes to countering this information. At the same time, we should also uh recognize the potential of that technology to be used to counter uh the such threats and uh think of ways how to innovate and use it uh for beneficial purposes. Thank you.
I think I'll turn it on, yeah. Um so I will address on the on the NATO. And so in the communications, what you always try is to avoid the say do gap. Whatever you say, you do it. Unless you don't do it, your kind of saying loses the meaning. So the propaganda, decades of propaganda, especially after the Munich Conference of Putin, was built up that it's a end line. It's a stop, that NATO will never expand to the Russian, close to the Russian Russian borders. And I I still believe and I say it always that Bucharest summit was a mistake, not giving the Georgia and Ukraine the map and fast uh kind of uh membership process. But what we have now is that we have one thousand more kilometers of the NATO and Russia that never existed before. And it's a Finland. And it will be the Sweden next. So Baltic Sea will be the NATO lake, as they as they call it from the joke now. So it's what we, what Russians have this say do gap. So they say that they will bomb Helsinki and they will bomb Berlin and they bombed Washington and et cetera. But we see the vice versa. So the strategic message is is there for NATO. So NATO is unified, NATO expanded, NATO is open to the countries that share the common values and the common principles of the Western civilization. So I think that's a, that's the most, I think, valuable message that we as a small countries receive now, that during the wartime, Finland joined the NATO. And you should go back and see the population support to NATO back in years in Finland. It never exceeded fifty three percentage. And people didn't want to uh go in uh go in NATO. And Finland is a unique country too. There's a few, very few countries that fought Russia's predecessor Soviet Union independently. And they have, they have a very not uh not easy, easy history. So I think you are on the right track of not making the same mistake as Russia does, that NATO does not have a say to gap. And what I what I wish as a citizen of Georgia also to see this in in my country's case as well, that Georgia joins the Georgia's joins NATO, because we see that nothing happens from the expansion. Helsinki is not bombed as as of now, before lunchtime. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The last thing I want to say, I really liked your idea about education or about developing this critical thinking since kindergarten, since school, et cetera, because I think that it can be changed in twenty, thirty years then. But it's something that's impossible to change just immediately with any of tools, because it's so uncontrolled, this information space. So yes, thank you, thank you very much for our speakers. Thank you for your readiness to contribute, to share your experience, knowledge. I guess it was brilliant panel. Thank you very much. I enjoyed it much. I I'm sure people as well. Thank you for your questions. Uh I usually it's not enough one hour for New Talk. Uh so yes, we are a little bit late. Uh but thank you and join us. We will improve our New Talks more. We have YouTube channel. Uh we already have some videos and the quality will be better. So follow us, thank you.